Maybe we still have Paige.
Okay.
Do you have Paige?
Paige, you're still there?
I am.
Okay, we still got Paige for recording. Now on, okay.
So we're ready to roll?
Ready to roll, Madam President.
We will bring this meeting of the Ohio High Point Joint Vocational School District to order. Roll call please.
Roll card. Locke?
Yes.
Burrows?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dunham?
Here.
Dyer?
Yes.
Ledlow?
Here.
McConnell?
Here.
McMahill?
Here.
Mouser?
Here.
Purcell?
Here.
Reams?
Yes.
Savage?
Staley?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Sundberger?
Not yet. Please stand, Dr. Volie. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We're going to move to item number three, comments, communications, and public participation. Dr. Smith is my guest.
Yeah, we have you here. We all have Greg Seaver. Okay. We have Nate from WPKO here. We have our attorneys here for executive session. We have plenty of our administrative team. We have Mrs. Conrad back here as our new ag teacher. She's been subbing for us this year, but she'll be taking over next year as full-time teaching staff. Not sure why Sarah's here, but... Okay. So Sarah's here just to support, okay, with a few, with the rest of the administrative team who are here to talk about things later that involve curriculum or trips or any of that kind of stuff, answer your questions. So that is all who is here tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Item three B, presentations.
So yes, we have one, they couldn't be here tonight, but Greg Seaver is our middle school teacher at Bunzel Middle School in Marysville that has been awarded the OACTE Career Tech Teacher of the Year for the state of Ohio. So submitted by her, his colleague, Amy Wagner. And then we also had a student win something, right, Gary?
We have a student who has won the Jensen Tech scholarship.
So we had a student from the program down there too also win a scholarship from them as well. So, and then I'm gonna go through just a few other quick presentation information, and I'll turn it over to Sam here for in compliance report on the building project. But we have, our auto hall has been clearing out, so those from Facilities and Grounds Committee tonight got to see one of the labs and how clean things are becoming as we move into May 1st. Again, ready to turn over Section C, that area of the building, to the contractors. They could see what's already been turned over and the brick walls and the things, concrete walls are going up. I think Facility Committee was pretty impressed with what's going on so far throughout the building, but good progress there. We have new hires on the board, as I said. Rochelle, we will be going into executive session at night, so if you want to say something to her before we move into there, we will have kind of a longer executive session this evening. There could be business to follow afterwards from the executive session, so that's why it's up front of the meeting. But if you want to say something to her so that she doesn't have to sit all night for you to vote yes later, she would appreciate that. Staff appreciation week is next week. It's first week of May for our staff here, and we'll be having some different things throughout the week for them, both in satellite and here on main campus. We also have board committees that I need to mention to you. We have a policy committee next board meeting, which is on the agenda tonight. I have two people signed up, which is Worry and Deb. Okay, Worry, Dryer, and Deb are both on the policy. Jeff is gonna be on policy. Chuck's gonna be on policy and Paul, okay? So Jeff, Paul, and Chuck, thank you. I have two on salary and fringe. We picked up some members for Facility and Ground tonight, which was great. I have two on salary and fringe, which is just Ann and Matt. Is there anybody else who wants to be on that? That'll probably be an important committee next year as we will kind of start the negotiation process probably sometime next October, fall, which will kind of take us through spring, right, Eric, before the final year of the contract? Kind of typically is what we do around that?
We've got a July 1/23 deadline to sort everything out.
Yeah, so we typically start having some of those discussions about a year and a half, two years out type of thing, so.
I will.
If I wait till next January, huh?
I will if you need another person.
Hey, Alyssa? So, and we've got plenty on the, we've got four people on the evaluation, which is Ann, Matt, Chuck, and Alyssa are on the evaluation committee. Is there anybody who wants to be on the evaluation committee?
For the superintendent.
Typically takes place for superintendent and treasurer, usually July, August, and for superintendent and treasurer, and then I have a mid-year one usually every January, February sometime. Okay, no more takers. Just wanted to make sure the committees were what you were hoping for. My last bit of information, Facilities and Grounds for a little bit about this, but one of our, our chiller that left here, we couldn't find a taker for it. The contractors then took it, but it is apparently found a new home in Fairborn Local School District. So another school district will continue to be cooled by the chiller that we had here that probably has about 15, maybe 20 more years of life in it, in that chiller. So Mr. Robert was pleased with that to see it go on to somebody else. I just wanted to bring that up as well. But project's on pace, and so I will turn it over to Sam from In Compliance to discuss that, and I will post his report. So let me share, share screen. Can you online page see the report?
I can.
Okay, Sam?
Let me, Rick.
That's, that'll, that'd be fine. Yep, that'd be fine.
Hello, as Rick mentioned, I'm saying I'm happy to be back to walk through the April monthly update. As for the project, so far so good. As Rick mentioned, everything's on pace. For the phase, for the phasing plan, again, and as discussed in the last couple of monthly updates, Monarch is still focusing its work in areas A, the addition, and area D, the central plan area. And actually, this month, actually, the Monarch branched out a little bit and moved into areas C. As for the work in area A, Monarch has did a little bit of work above ground and of below ground. The above-ground work consisted of slab upgrade, some CMU walls, CMU elevator shaft. Below-ground work was completion of the majority of the foundations, as well as bringing some utilities into the addition. For the area C, Monarch primarily focused on the diesel lab addition, which is outside the existing building footprint. They were able to remove most of the pavement in the area where the addition is gonna be, put the foundations in as well as some CMU foundation walls. For area D, Monarch has continued in central plan area one, they put some concrete building, concrete equipment pad in for, good, that's all. For the equipment that is going to be coming in the next few months. And they've also started painting, they painted the walls and the ceiling for that central plan area one as well, and continued some of the rough end, electrical conduit, piping, and so forth. Getting into some more of the construction administration side of things, Monarch, Monarch provided their, the majority of their construction baseline schedule. There are a couple, couple comments from MB5, the district scheduling consultant, but those are being incorporated into the baseline schedule. Because of the majority of that schedule is completed, Monarch did submit their first pay application, which you'll see in the tally of the budget below. The submittal process is still running smoothly. That, I think primarily due to the communication between Monarch and Frytag. Monarch lets Frytag know what submittals are critical, and Frytag moves those up to the top of the pile, prioritizes those so they can get comments or approval back to Frytag, so needed equipment can, needed equipment and material can be purchased quickly and be brought to the site. Go ahead, move that a little bit, Dr. Smith. All right. This is the project budget. I want to go through line by line. This is in a board packet. I just wanted to mention that the project budget was updated through April the 23rd. So all the invoices and payouts I saw through the 23rd are input here. As you can see, with the general contract, first pay application did come out. Just looking through these numbers, everything's still in green, so the remaining budget, I don't see any reasons for concern at this time. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Smith. Go on. So for contingency tracking, we've been discussing change orders one through five, the last, last couple of updates. They were finally approved this month. So change orders one through five totaled right about $125,000. So they're taking that out of the beginning balance of a little bit over $3 million, because the district right below $3 million, $3 million. So the district's sitting pretty at this time as far as construction contingency goes. If you'll move it down a little bit, Dr. Smith. There are two change orders in process. First would be the audiovisual modifications. So Monarch has submitted the pricing. Frytag's looking over that and some door changing. Monarch's still waiting to get pricing from their subcontractors of that, and then the next stage would be submission to Frytag to review that pricing. So for scheduled look ahead, so what's gonna be happening in the next month ahead, so for...
So, and let me give you just a little bit update there. On the audiovisual, that pricing came back. The district rejected about half of that change order, okay? There's gonna be some, some small modifications for wiring and things, but some other pieces. Mr. Case thinks they were trying to charge us about double what he can get and put it in himself. So we'll buy those little air trains ourself and install them later for about $350 instead of $741, which was the price on the change order for like an additional 17 or 18 of them, and so, so that one will come in. There will be, like I said, some wiring and things that were missed that will still have to be part of that change order, but it will be much less than what the original thought was gonna be. And is those doors the ones that I'm talking about for alley help? Okay, so this is a, something I think I put in your packet as well, but just so you know, this one has to do with, we met with the hospital bed vendors. Ms. Purcell will enjoy this. But we're getting all new beds and things of that nature, and the vendor said, well, will we be able to roll them in the door? And I says, well, how big does your door have to be? And so it happens to be that our doors were not the size they need to be to, we have a place that's supposed to be like a mock hospital emergency room. We have a doctor's office room in our new thing, and, but we're also getting all new beds in this process at the same time through the same vendor with PI money and things like that. We're gonna be replacing all the beds at Kenton, and we're gonna be replacing all the beds at Marysville Early College High School, even those, those are not very old. We want to put them all on the same contract with the same vendor with the same things, and we're gonna bring the ones from Marysville up here and replace the ones in the Clark State Building or the nursing program that Clark State does. So those will be four or five years old, which they now have about 25-year-old beds in there. And so all the beds in the district will be, be upgraded here through our Sloan money or through other parts, PI money, different types of things on that process here, but buying them as a group, we can get a little better pricing to do it all for the building, and the company has agreed to bring those in over phases, so we can put a PO in for all 15 beds, but we can have five delivered this summer to Kenton and different types of things. And I think it's actually three in Kenton and a phlebotomy chair, two, four in Kenton and a phlebotomy chair type thing is coming to Kenton, so all, all that's part of the process there. So just wanted to make you know why that change order is taking place. Thank you, Sam.
So scheduled look ahead to what's scheduled for the next month coming up. In area A, Monarch will continue putting in the concrete slab upgrade realm for, they're scheduled to actually pop out the CMU elevator shaft, which I see they've started out there and begin still erection, which is pretty exciting for recovering structural engineer. In area C, in area C, they're actually going to start roofing work. Immolition of some ceilings, plumbing, electrical, HVAC. And also, they're going to continue the diesel addition framing. For area D, Monarch's going to continue with rough end conduits, electrical wiring, piping, and actually, there are two, two big, big things coming up. On the cooling tower is scheduled to be delivered and set, and the air handling unit number one is scheduled to be delivered and set.
Another thing there too, just on steel, this was one of our fears, was about steel, and this is just how things are by, by month by month that are so important, is our steel got ordered before Amazon put in their huge order across the country, and our steel's all supposed to be here on time right now. So apparently, other job sites are having a couple of months behind because Amazon put in a huge national order with a steel company. And, and so just be grateful, we are on time with steel.
They're putting several projects months and months behind, so good to get out in front of that. But the remainder of the report is basically just construction photos, so take a look at those at your leisure, and this is a good time for any questions. Does anybody have any questions at this time regarding projects, any groups, contingency? All right. Hearing none, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So I believe that's all of presentations for this evening, Madam President.
Okay, and then so for item three C, the district update on that, we have the students from on campus that are the students of the month. Our Kirsten Cottrell from Cosmetology II at Graham, and Jared Roush, I think that? Technology, Diesel Technology II from Triad High School. And then our staff member of the month is Deborah Park, it's Burke, I'm sorry, a substitute teacher. So we give them our congratulations for those awards. So we'll move to item four, committee reports and presentations, and Paul, do you have a legislative report?
Yeah, the new graduation pathways for 2021. Pathway one says curriculum-only pathway. Eligible students may qualify for graduation in the, if they're principal in consolation with their teachers, counselors, determine the student had met the district curriculum requirements. Or two, pathway is curriculum requirements for Ohio means job readiness seal. The, see. Well, the new incentive from the governor's office in working to keep Ohio's talented workforce in our state. The career centers are at the forefront of this innovative. On April 19th, the governor's office announced their newest initiative, the Ohio, the High School Technical Entrepreneurship Pilot Program with the goal of connecting Ohio high school students with technology roles and technology businesses around Ohio. Senator Portman highlights need the, today US, March, March 17th, that's an old one, sorry. House Bill 277 was presented. It's revised code, revised law, recovery, regulation of cosmetologists and barbers. And Lieutenant Governor Houston, pilot programming Lincoln High School students to tech apprenticeships. The, the State Board of Education passed a resolution by vote of 10/7 to recommend that approval of recommendation to the General Assembly regarding revisions to the state report card. The elimination of the current A through F letter grade rating system, they're placing it with a new rating system, which is clear and easy for families to understand, which I think more families understand the A through F, but... The adoption of a new equality fund that will shine light on the performance of students' groups to ensure schools are accountable for the academic achievement of all students in the state of Ohio. A couple of the notes, I don't know if anybody ever reads these journals that send out. Ben Logan was highlighted for the, the staff and students honored the board members with different gifts this year. And they had a 62nd radio spot run for three weeks in January. Released the local radio station newspaper thanking the board members and created new profile images for each board member. And of course, High Point made it also. Superintendent Dr. Rich Smith recognized the board members for their years of service and their dedication. Our board members bring experience from the industry, as well as from the partner school board that they serve on. And we're all part of the exciting time at High Point as we prepare for the first phase of our building renovation project. We look forward to the future of education as we continue to provide our students in first-century education for the modern-day workforce, which is pretty nice to get publicated where everybody else can see what we're doing. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
And Mr. Mahill, they changed to the ABC grade card because that was supposed to be simpler for parents to understand six, seven years ago. So that's the rotation. It just keeps bouncing back and forth.
Okay, so we're ready for item five?
We are. We're ready for executive session.
Okay, I need a motion in a second to enter into executive session for the purpose of the discipline of an employee and then matters required to be kept confidential by state statutes, revised code 121.22G5. A motion in a second?
McMahill?
Which is just Madam President, four or five minutes, just to say, thank the people when you switch over.
So we're okay for roll call?
We are.
Roll call please.
Locke?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
Ledlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mahill?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Purcell?
Yeah.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sundberger?
Yes.
Roll card?
Yes.
Christian Carries, and then time?
Time to start maybe be about 7:35, give about six or seven minutes.
Okay.
In case anybody wants to say hi to the new teacher or see the drawing over there about what our kids will be putting on the front of the building, welding class, stuff like that, so take a few minutes. You might want to take a bathroom break. This will be a long executive session. Okay, I'll put you down 7:20. Well, I'm like, seven things trying to go on. That's fine. So I need to stop recording.
Bailey, is that the name that I heard?
We are now back recording and open session.
And then we're going to move to item six, topics for discussion. Item 6A is a call for any modifications to the agenda.
That would be adding 10A.
Oh, we could, we could add it as item 10A, yes.
I would also like to bring to the board's attention, 9B, you got addendum added to your packet today. We had a resignation letter from Craig Semantiner, the FFA teacher from Riverside, has taken another position. And so we have added that to the 9B section as an addendum as well.
So do we have any modifications for the agenda, Matt?
No, I'll, I'll be moving to authorize that the treasurer pay all remaining legal fees to broker necro for services rendered leading up to our bid opening.
And further authorize me to pay those from the general fund, correct?
All right, thank you. Item 6B, the OSBA Student Achievement Liaison. We need one?
Apparently so. Eric, you want to explain that one? Didn't you, you researched it a little bit? I kind of forget.
I got a call from OSBA, and they were asking for president, vice president legislative liaison, and they ask also who our student achievement liaison was. I told them that I was unaware of the need for a student achievement liaison, but before I would ask any board member to do it, they would probably be interested in what it entailed. So if you would agree to be the student achievement liaison, I would give your contact information to OSBA. And you would get either a monthly or a quarterly student achievement publication from OSBA, and it would be their desire that you would read that publication and come back, much like Paul does, as the legislative liaison, discuss articles that are in that publication.
So...
I would suggest if you did it, maybe it'd be a quarterly report out added to the committee reports, like Paul does. So you could take a couple of magazines and kind of combine a few articles and maybe report out something if you would like to have student achievement.
That's not how we did it. Like, like Tim O'Reilly was ours at Bell Fountain, and he contacted all the school principals before every board meeting and got the best things that had happened within that school, and we reported him for student achievement at our board meeting, so I suppose you could do it.
I'm just telling you what the OSBA people shared with me.
Well, because they asked for also student achievement people to come to the OSBA annual conference. And, you know, and then showcase their skills or whatever that they're doing there, so I don't know.
Kelsey puts that information out. You get the boardly notes updates where we talk about what takes place on campus and satellite, and so we have that kind of report to you to take back to your board. Once again, I think it's a voluntary position, but it's totally up to the board if you want to have one.
Anybody want to do it?
Well, yeah, I'll do it.
On top of that one?
Yeah.
He's the same as your current job.
Can I double my pay?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Item 6C, Policy Committee Meeting is May the 19th.
Yes, so it'll be 6:00 PM, the Policy Committee, and that will be Worry, Deb, Jeff, Paul, and...
What is our board meeting at 7:00 then?
We have, we have a, we have a work session at night for five-year forecast.
Is that here, Dr. Smith?
Yes, we'll be in 1028 at 6:00 ahead of time and go to Policy, and then we'll go into the work session.
Because I had that at 6:30, am I wrong?
That's the next line down.
Work session is at 6:30.
Work session is at 6:30.
All right, just want to make sure I show up. Okay, so you got, we have the policy meeting at 6:00, 6D, the May Board...
And Chuck, yeah, Chuck's on there too.
May Board of Education work session is at 6:30 that same night here. 6E, Senior Awards, May 21st at 10:00 AM in the morning at Bell Fountain High School Auditorium. And any board member that would want to come is welcome to come, correct?
Correct.
Convocation is May 21st at 4:30 PM at Bell Fountain High School. At the, it's on the football field, but we meet in the library?
Yeah, we'll get that information out to you, but I'm assuming we'll meet in the library and walk off the football field.
Super.
Can you say Bell Fountain, they'll, they'll meet there also, or...
And have graduation after at...
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
Any others who have their graduation there, someone else would?
No, not have it there. Our kids have to be out before 6:00 to get to Riverside for their graduation at 6:30 on the same night. So we're gonna go from 4:30 to 5:30, try to get those kids out so they can get there about 6:10 to line up in line to march in their graduation there, and I will be leaving directly after the Bell Fountain one to go to Riverside. I believe Tanya or Brad are staying for, I think Tanya is staying for Bell Fountain. I can't split myself.
Well, and everybody just needs to be safe driving to Riverside. They need to get there safely without a ticket. 6G is the regular May board meeting. Is it, I mean, on May 26th at 7:00 PM?
If you remember, typically, we have our board member after convocation. We're not doing that because it's a Friday night, and we have the other board graduations going on, so we went ahead... So we went ahead last time and voted or recommended that we do it on May twenty-sixth, our regular time.
Six H, June regular board meeting is June the thirtieth at seven P M. We're going to do it on Zoom.
So if you remember last time we talked, the June and July, these six H and I are because we will be without power and air conditioning and things in this building at that time. And so we elected to just do Zoom as we're still allowed to do Zoom by law through July thirty-first.
Okay, at seven P M. For July twenty-eighth. We're going to do your superintendent evaluation that night? When do we have to do that by?
Um, yeah, I will try to get you that information in June, you typically do it in July as well, yeah.
All right, item seven, approval of the minutes, a motion in a second for approval of the March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one minutes. Burrows?
Burrows.
Any comments or questions? Roll call please.
Burrows?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
Ledlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhill?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Hersell?
Yeah.
Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Not bad.
Stanford's not bad.
Uh, I'm sorry, Wallace?
Yes.
Sundberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
And Buck?
Yes.
Action items for consideration is recommended by the treasurer, a motion in a second to bring items eight A through eight I to the floor for discussion and vote.
How did that go again?
Getting slow. They're getting quicker. Roll call please. Yeah, we're going to do discussion. And then roll call then, yes, please. Getting late, you guys.
So I plan to talk a little bit about the real estate tax settlements, but were there any questions about anything in addition to the real estate tax settlements? Okay, long and short of it, I have projected a three point six percent increase in real estate tax revenues from last year to this year. I have a method, it's actually rather arduous, so just know there are some work involved in my projections. When we ended the month of March, I not yet received the Union County settlement, we talked about that at the board meeting as well. On April second, I did receive it. After the Union County settlement, we saw a seven point two percent increase in revenues this year over last. I had projected about a quarter of a million dollar increase, it turned out to be just short of five hundred thousand. Logan County saw bigger than average increases, but Union County, whether you looked at it on our fiscal year or on the twenty twenty calendar year. Union County was a twenty percent increase for us this year versus last. So no matter what arduous task I take upon myself, I would have had a hard time coming up with twenty percent from Union County. So I called the auditor's office and the explanation I received was, was rather simple and you'll probably laugh a little bit. She just told me that people are paying way too much money for property and land in Union County. And that it is just driving the property values up way higher than they should be, okay? So I put in just some info for you, and if you haven't had a chance yet, I actually put a graph in there with with a twenty-six year history of our real estate tax collection with the big four counties, Logan, Champaign, Union, and Harden. What I tried to show were those periods where we go through the six-year reappraisal process, which is a formal process the auditor's office goes through to reevaluate all properties in, in the counties. What I want you to see through that process is that taxpayers pay their taxes on a calendar year basis. But of course, we work on a fiscal year basis, so we are July one to June thirty as opposed to the calendar year. So when taxes go on the rolls in twenty twenty, they're actually paid and collected in twenty twenty-one. Now, for a school district like Ohio High Point, twenty twenty-one is the second half of the fiscal year twenty-one. And it's the first half of the fiscal year twenty-two. So it actually takes us two school years before we really experience the reevaluation. So what you saw was that Logan, Champaign, and Union Counties all went through that six-year process. I believe it was two thousand nineteen. But we're just now catching the tail end of it in this school year that we're in now. So it's just kind of a neat little information thing. The other thing I wanted you to see is somewhat the discussion that we have from time to time, how which of these counties is not like the other? And Union County really is not like the other counties. And you can see, I would never say that real estate tax revenues are erratic from Union County. But if you look over time, you tend to see a lot more peaks and valleys in our Union County than you do in the others. And I think that really has so much to do with the fact that they have so little ag value as compared to our other big three counties. So just wanted to update you on, on that info tonight. Any other questions about real estate, anything else?
That's interesting, because our, our U K revenue was down from last year. We only have about fifty houses.
And I have Marysville. I, I, we have Marysville, I'm sorry.
And he's so very proud of that.
All right, other items on my agenda tonight, you'll see in eight C. We are asking for some appropriation modifications, we're not increasing the budget with eight C. We're just asking to shift some of the already budgeted money between departments. Item eight D, we are asking for an appropriation increase. Three thousand of the one hundred ninety-three thousand dollar increase would be associated with our Business Professionals of America, CTSO, Student Activity Fund. And the other is appropriating an additional one hundred ninety thousand dollars in the student wellness fund. So neither of these related to our general fund. Item eight E through F, there's a lot of house cleaning going on around here right now. Specifically in item eight F, we had nine vehicles probably should have been hauled out of here long before this week, but they need to go. As a matter of fact, they've already went, so.
As I told facilities and grounds in eight E, we've been giving tools that are still usable. We've been giving toolboxes and things, you know, we have sets that have sockets that are missing and different types of stuff. We've turned those things over to students for their help and us cleaning out those labs and getting things ready type of thing. And we have told our teachers to prioritize what they're going to need to start the school year and that. And that will replace some of those things with different types of project money here for the building project as we move forward.
So will the money for eight F go to general fund?
Yes.
Sure you don't want to put it over in board scholarships?
When, whenever district owned assets are sold, the default setting is the general fund. Unless I am directed otherwise by the board, but I can't make that decision. So if it comes to me and we get it, it goes to the general fund.
Can we do scholarship for just real quick five seconds? So the Board of Education decided a few years back that we were going to offer scholarships here at Ohio High Point. And when we got our, we receive a paycheck in December of every year with mileage and, you know, attendance at the meetings. And so you could either say that you wanted like a certain amount taken out automatically and that it would be an automatic renewal. Or you could just say it was a one-time donation and then you would do it every year. Well, yesterday we sat on this, I, I came in to represent the board on the scholarship committee. And our account only has two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents in it. I think, you know, I forgot to ask anybody about it in December. And there were maybe four of us that gave and that's how we came up with that money, otherwise there wouldn't have been any. What I don't know then is, I would love to support our students and for us to continue that. But it was truly, you know, some people have a board scholarship and it's funded a different way. This was truly our money funding that scholarship every year. So like, for instance, mine, mine's an automatic thing and I give a hundred every year. And so we only had two fifty to give the person. And then our board member from Urbana was Warren Stevens, he was killed on the way to a board meeting in a car accident. That, you know, a, a night. And so then we, it's our board scholarship that we said that we were going to start giving it in honor of him. Does it have to remain that way? I mean, that's, that's your pleasure to decide, you know, one way or the other, you know, but we were only able to give a student two hundred fifty dollars, which is better than nothing. But it really hasn't represented what we get, you know, have given in the past. Last year we did have five hundred in it. And so I don't know, we do, we bought the forms tonight in case you would like to fill those out. Or, and if there's anything you want to donate between now and convocation, you know, the, the scholarships are being awarded now. Or however you would like to do, or if you don't want to do this, just say, and then we'll know how to proceed.
Eric, do you know how much scrap donation or things we typically get in year type stuff, is that very?
It, it's anything but a formula.
Because you remember for a while we were using the recycling money, it was coming back to the scholarship fund for a while, but?
The Logan County Solid Waste would present a check to the Board of Ed during a Board of Education meeting.
And then we put that money in the fund, but we haven't had that, but?
No.
We haven't had a lot to probably recycle with the students, sometimes here, sometimes not here?
I don't know that they're doing that rebate program.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think I've heard that.
So do you, do you want to think about it and let me know, or how would you like? Because I'm not going to put you on the spot, but if you would like us to continue with it, we need to fund it. And if you don't want to, that's totally up to the board.
Do we have that money put in that fund, is that doable or?
If you tell me to.
There's, there's paperwork here that you fill out and it tells him what?
I think Melissa's asking about the scrap donation, if we take money that we receive from donation like cars and the metal and stuff like that, could we put that to the scholarship fund instead of the general fund?
Not as a general rule, I'm saying just the specific.
This year?
This one.
The sheer group?
And, well, why can't we do it as a general rule? I mean, because our, the general fund is a very healthy fund.
Why can't we do what?
The disposition of assets, why can't that money go into a scholarship fund?
Well, I would ask, you know, you might think that's okay if it's five hundred dollars, would you feel the same way if it's five thousand? Or if it's ten thousand?
That's why I was just thinking on a case by case, we could.
Our board scholarship has historically come from asking the general fund to pay for our scholarship that we give. We certainly can do what you're asking, but that isn't.
I was just asking to fortify it and then?
Well, and I, and I don't think we, I didn't remember seeing that form this, this go around, this.
See, mine's an automatic one, so it came out of my chat.
As long as I've been here.
I think it must.
I didn't know it was even a thing.
And you know what, I don't think I said anything about it, but it was such an unusual year.
I remember Warren saying he donated the, the part of the mileage part, but I think it went to some kid's something that was with the state, it didn't even have to do with.
OSBA for, you know, for the legal fees to, you know, lobby, do, you know, lobby the legislator for children's issues.
I can certainly bring the payroll deduction forms now. If you fill them out tonight, tomorrow night or in September, it's still a December.
Exactly, right, that's what I was saying, just to fortify it for now.
Now, this might be six weeks before the money comes in and graduation will have passed.
And why don't we do the payroll reduction stuff out to everybody?
Okay. And then just go ahead and give the two.
I'll have, I'll have Beth, we could just have her email the board, the form, and then you can fill it out and bring it to the next board meeting if you wish, that's up to your call, is that?
And I'll have them let me hard copy too.
We've awarded the scholarship for this year, so.
I actually think those are direct calls and forms.
Right.
Could we say the first five hundred or one thousand dollars of that fund is good towards the scholarship and the rest go into the general fund, like set an amount that? We would have the same amount every year? And it's not, that way it's not a big huge amount, but it's something we'll have consistently every year.
The first thousand dollars of scrap money goes to the scholarship fund and after that goes to general fund, you're saying something like that, Tom?
I bet.
Plus, given two hundred and fifty dollar scholarships, you'd at least be able to award four, if you get a bonus one, then you get a bonus one.
I mean, you guys can still contribute to it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you know, so maybe one year it could be four, maybe one year it's six or seven, so.
I might have to make that motion.
Well, I, I almost think if that's something you want, we could put it on the next agenda, we won't see this money in time.
Right.
For this graduation.
Right, plus Matt said they've already been awarded, so it's kind of viewpoint now.
Let's, let's take the next month or so and get that short up how we want and.
Okay, I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead. You were at this.
I'm at eight G now, so, and Rick will probably jump in on this, but there is a parking lot repaving project, basically the student parking lot that is on a cycle. Now, for whatever reason, the student parking lot is not part of the big building project. So this is a standalone outside of the project, outside of the building fund money. So this would be coming from actually the P I account to, to do this. But it's over the fifty thousand dollar threshold, the estimate is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Eight G just authorizes me to go ahead and get everything in place to seek competitive bids, which we will then bring back to the board to approve. I know we have the dates set, they're nodding. Let's see, eight I is the final item. I use Shakely Uniserve out of Cincinnati, not only for workers comp, but they also run interference on our unemployment claims. I find them to be extremely helpful and would very much like to work with them again next year.
Okay, anything further for discussion?
The cycle.
Oh, you have the wrong guy sitting in front of you, but it's on a cycle, Robert Scott. I don't know if it's five years, seven years, ten years, but like everything he has is on a main.
And this is going to be grinded off like two new inches or whatever, we're going to use the grindings for a pad down there that we hope to eventually put a building for construction trades and other types of stuff. And the project's over and different stuff, so it will have a couple of benefits.
I'm just curious.
I can get that information for you, I don't know what the cycle is, but.
Didn't say anything at the meetings or not, did he?
He said that the parking lot was going to be done, but he didn't say anything about the cycle.
I actually think it was supposed to be done a couple of years ago, but they know they're going to have to run a water line or something across there. So if we had put this parking lot down last year, we would have cut into it this year. And so we backed it up a year or two off of.
He did say that when we were walking through the buildings. Anything else for discussion? Roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dunham?
Yes.
Dyer?
Yes.
Ledlow?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Mayhill?
Yes.
Mouser?
Yes.
Hersell? Reams?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Sundberger?
Yes.
Brookhart?
Yes.
Buck?
Yes.
And Burrows?
Yes.
Motion carries. Action items for consideration is recommended by the superintendent, a motion in a second. A motion and a second to bring nine A through nine I to the floor for vote and consideration.
Vote.
Mayhew.
Dr. Smith.
I would say that most of the stuff here is standard. Uh, the textbooks are over there. If you didn't get to look at them earlier or wanna have any questions, the advisors are here, supervisors are here. I would ask Mr. Richardson to kind of explain nine F and nine G, which is textbook adoption and nine G course of study.
The course of study documents uh, that were provided this month are a little different than we've done in the past. As we're looking at course of studies this year, uh, trying to decide, you know, what new courses need approved, what haven't need approved. Uh, we found some inconsistencies in practices and record keeping of what has been approved, what hasn't been approved. So we really wanted to kind of take the approach of cleaning it up. Uh, so what is being presented this month is essentially all the pathways that we offer across the district in career tech and asking the board to approve the O D E approved courses of studies for those pathways. So that we know moving forward, all of our courses are board approved like they're supposed to be. And then as they come up for renewal by the state, when they rewrite the standards, we will just then present to you on the year, you know, whatever path these new standards have been revised by O D E for your approval. Uh, in addition, uh, and actual stuff that we thought uh, would be something uh, just to help better inform the board about our course offerings. Uh, you'll notice a new sheet that lists twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two uh, career tech course offerings. Uh, we will start providing that document to you every year this time of year. And it will show you the planned courses that we're gonna offer in all of our programs and all of our locations across the district. Uh, because as you know, with the approved course of studies, within a pathway, there's a lot of different courses that could be offered, but it doesn't necessarily mean we are offering them. So we wanna make sure that we're transparent with the board, uh, just to help inform you for you to be able to see it here, you know, within your own districts, what courses are being offered, what courses are being offered here on campus as well. So we hope that that's a informative document for you, uh, and it allows you to really see the the different courses we're offering across the district and across all of our programs. And then it gives you an opportunity that if you had questions about specific programs or specific course offerings, when you review that, you could bring it up and we could, you know, have further conversation about it. But I think it'll really kind of help clean up our process and help us be a lot more transparent uh, with the board in terms of what our course offerings are every year.
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Like I said, anybody have any questions on any other ones in my section right there? Okay, I think we're good, ma'am president on that part.
Roll call please.
Okay, we're at the top of page thirteen. Ryan, is everybody concerned too? Dunham.
Yes.
Dyer.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Mayhew.
Yes.
Mauser.
Yes.
Purcell.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Stanford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Yes.
Sundberg.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
And Campbell.
Yes.
Sorry, Paige, to be near the end and didn't put the agenda back up for you.
No worries, no worries.
So we can't share everything so far.
Ten A.
No, we're going to nine J travel vouchers, ma'am. Nine J has a separate.
Oh, that's right, cause I was gonna say, I didn't think I announced that. I thought, uh-oh. Okay, so we're gonna do the travel voucher um, about the trip, um, number nine, eh, nine J. So a motion and a second to bring it uh, up for discussion and then vote for the trip to Belize.
Buck.
Dyer.
Okay, Dr. Smith.
Yeah, so if you remember last time, we pulled this from the agenda uh, after talking to the attorney and and some of the changes, you'll see this comes back a little bit different. Um, and Craig Semitana did just resign, so I'm assuming he won't be the name uh, in this uh, first one up there. Um, but it could be the new ag teacher. But basically what we're now doing is we're not really approving the trip. We're approving the donation of the travel voucher to the employee and that we're allowing them basically to go on this P D with the student. The parents are the ones who choose where they want to uh, pay with this company, do that with this company, take the risk with that company, decide to take the risk based on the uh, different uh, warnings put out by the State Department, those type of things is really up to them. I know if you have questions, both Brad and Terry have researched this, why they chose Belize, that they had some different things other than ag just there and it was a multiple type reason and that, you know, the warnings for the Belize is the same, I think, for Brad's trip to the Bahamas. It's same category that he's taking, uh, that is some of the standard type warnings for. But there, once again, we found there's some of the standard type warnings that are out there a lot all the time uh, with the COVID type stuff. So we're really just approving our teacher being allowed to go and accept that donation legally to do so. The final one that's on there, uh, where for Michael, one the English was, one that was already previously approved before uh, uh, COVID took place. And so they've already kind of paid. These just have different dates uh, because COVID and stuff changed the dates or changed the actual trip uh, for that to take place, but it was prior approved by this board. And now we're bringing it back because of the date change. Um, is there any questions from the board on this issue that either I, Brad, or Terry can answer for you?
The thing is, like you said, having Craig's name on there specifically, should we change that to maybe the onsite ag teacher?
Strike Craig.
Craig in Riverside Satellite Ag Instructor.
Yeah.
Think I'd be more legally responsible.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to vote on it again.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions or concern? Okay.
Roll call please.
Dyer.
Yes.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Mauser.
Yes.
Cell.
Yes.
Reams.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Stanford. Wallace.
Yes.
Sundberger.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell.
No.
And Dunham.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten is board um, resolutions and action items. Do we wanna add ten A there?
Do you want to read it or would you like me to?
You can.
I've had enough. I've had enough fun.
Tell me if this.
So I'll just read you what I had. I move that we authorize the treasurer to pay from the general fund all remaining legal fees to for services rendered leading up to our bid.
Recognizing there wasn't a, there's not a P O currently in place and that it will be made from the general fund. I think I have all of that in here.
Yep, it's good.
A motion and a second.
Ludlow.
Dunham.
Melissa, did you get it first or not?
I don't know.
I'd say she got it.
I had Ludlow and Buck, but Ludlow.
I was last.
Dunham and Ludlow.
Ludlow and Dunham.
Okay.
Anything further before we vote? Roll call please.
Ludlow.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Mayhew.
Yes.
Mauser.
Yes.
Purcell. Reams.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Stanford. Wallace.
Yes.
Sundberger.
Yes.
Brookhart.
Yes.
Buck.
Yes.
Burrows.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dunham.
Yes.
Dyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else for the good of the organization? A motion and a second for adjournment. Fucking Campbell.
Campbell.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Get you go home. Thank you all so much and be safe and bring home.